In the decision-making process, so public participation is essential and it's powerful. Also, it is purposeful. We're not just engaging just for the sake of engaging. The biggest frustration that you hear from community is, "Yes, for my input, what did you do with it? You didn't do anything with it." And there's that lack of clarity. So it's really important that the decision-making process, that it's purposeful. And with effective public participation, it's value-based. So we're looking for the common ground. As an organization, we have values, as key stakeholders, we have values. They may be different because there's a lot of commonalities. And so what we're looking to do is find that common ground, and we're looking to develop a process that has those process values that reflect our values as an organization, and lead how we're going to engage, not just what we're doing. So that's an important component of it, and really important is the fact that it's decision-oriented. It's based to the input, it is helping our organization do something. And then it's goal-driven. So, and then one thing with decision-oriented too, it's important as an organization too, is for us to take a look at what are we trying to achieve and how do we need input? So it's not going to be the same every single time regarding input, it's not that cookie kind of approach. And we're also, you know, there may be situations where you say, "Yeah, tell us what you want, we're going to implement that." But it really is structured, it's goal-oriented, and when you have the goal-driven component to it, it's that we're looking for the outcomes. How's it going to benefit us as an organization and any of our events? Can you have this, that, this part? Okay. And then this, you guys have seen this before, I use this, because this really is a great way of, it shows where we're goal-driven. Our commitment to our community. So you've got this handout, and then you've got this beautiful one, which aligns, I'm going to explain this, but I'd like for you to look at this report as I share this with you, just to show that here's the way that we're connecting, engaging with our community. And it really is that commitment, when we say we're going to inform our community, it's that commitment to our public to keep them informed. And we do that through our communication, Mr. Communications Plan, well, School Communications, it's, "We're going to keep you apprised of what we are doing as an organization." So that's an example of how we engage our community. We also consult as a district and as a board. You have your board meetings, and you have opportunities for input. And when you look at this spectrum of engagement, we're starting from the lowest level of impact in the decision-making process, and as we go, it's going to get an increasing level of participation. Conversations with the board, it is a way to consult community. It's not representative of the entire community, but it's an opportunity for stakeholders, depending on their need, to meet and connect with board members. District survey, we do a quarterly project-based, and I think we did it for the Start Time, no, Start Times. We do district surveys to consult with our broader stakeholders, not just parents, but registered voters. We do a variety of different surveys across the district. We have focus groups, at the University was another example, open houses, we did for enrollment demographics task force. So the commitment to our community about consult is, not only are we going to inform you, but we're going to ask for your input, we're going to be clear about what input we're asking for, and then we're going to tell you how we use it in the engagement process. Involve some examples of ways that we, as a district, involve our stakeholders and community is through various trainings that we have. One thing is a communications and partnerships office that we're working on, is Parent Institute. We're working to collaborate with PTA on that, Kit took, as was our engagement liaison through the PTSA. And so that will just change a little bit, but as we plan and prepare for those transitions, how can we work to support families next year? So that's a way that we can involve our community, so it's more extensive than just consulting and saying, "Hey, what are your needs?" You're actually involving stakeholders to ask them, you know, how can we collaborate, or how can we use that input, we're going to keep them informed. Collaborate is a key way that the district is really engaging, involving folks in the public participation process. It is the next highest level versus just giving decision-making power over to the public. We have many districts and board-directed task forces, and that truly is that collaboration of engaging with your community. The community commitment is, "We will look to you for advice and innovation in formulating solutions, incorporate your advice and recommendations into our decisions to the maximum extent possible." So CNAC's an example, the Technology Advisory Committee, Enrollment Demographics Task Force is an example of that, ELL Task Force. Natural Leaders is also a way that we're collaborating with the school. Is there any to you? Yes, we do. Yeah, so actually, the natural leader position is from that recommendation of the ELL. Do you want to come on the show? Because I don't think we ever get that way, you know, or we're going to. Well, it's certainly not something we get updated, obviously, frequently.
I feel like there was, there was a large effort, what, about two years ago, in creative recommendations, and then.
How for you? That's a question. I don't think we agree really until we had the recommendation, which that was like about a month to a year ago? And so.
Last spring or this spring before?
Yeah. And then also school group planning, so there's information to, is a way to collaborate.
You put all the, all the greater configuration task forces in there?
Oh, I forgot.
They're on this one.
Thank you. I forgot to put it in the folder.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
When we're talking about our Hispanic population and those things, that, I didn't even know that we have this ELL task force.
And so one thing that's important, okay, I'll get through the spectrum. And then empower, that's your highest level, and that's turning over the decision-making power to your public, which our public, they are empowered, and that's collecting on you, school board elections, and also bond and leis. Also, at schools, they may have different opportunities where they give decision-making power over to students, which act depending on what the situation is. But, you know, district-wide, community-wide, those are two examples for that. And what's interesting and something important to remember in the engagement process is, the needs of our public may change throughout that decision step, and I'm going to show you some examples in just a moment. Can I try to describe kind of the engagement, these are that river of engagement. And it truly is going to depend on the needs of the individual stakeholders. There are some stakeholders who just need to dip their toe in the water, just need to be informed. Very cool, doesn't really personally affect me, that's okay. There are going to be some folks that need to go up to their needs of, you know, "I want to be consulted." There are some folks that are going to need to be in that river for a while until they, you know, their needs are met. And there's some folks that are going to need to be engaged the entire way through. And so it's just honoring and understanding the needs of our stakeholders, and that's one thing that we are really trying to do when we're crafting our public participation. So it's not just a matter of, "Let's do a survey." It's really thinking about what their needs are of our community, of our stakeholders and our organization, so we can work on that. So improvements we've made in public participation have been that we are following best practice. We're doing our best to follow best practice, can you agree? Absolutely. We're learning every day. We're really focusing on supporting the decision-making process. There's a difference between public relations, community relations, developing mutually beneficial relationships, and there's a difference between public participation, where you're engaging your stakeholders to support the decision-making process. So being aware of what those differences are and how we approach that, so be clear. So folks are giving the needs then.
Sure. I don't want to.
That's okay.
No, I have a question, just, you know, from a philosophical standpoint, like what, so what happens when there's a disconnect? Perhaps there, you know, the, if we're looking at, I don't know, if we're looking, if we're looking at a program in the district, and it's being newly formed, and so perhaps the district's staff is thinking, "Okay, we really could use some folks involved, you know, in this process." But there's some folks on the community side thinking, "We would like to be empowered." And what if there's a disconnect between expectations, between different groups? I mean, how, is it my jumping out in terms of how your.
But, that's okay. That, I think, is why we need to have clarity when we're identifying the process and clarity in our communication. But, let's go back to that piece. But I think it all comes back down to being very clear in defining what we want, what are our goals, what are the level that we're going to engage and be clear about it, because we've learned a lot. And there are ways that you can write the truth, so to speak, but it all comes back to being very clear. Because needs are going to be different, and that's when we do a stakeholder assessment. We did it for boundary adjustment, is there are going to be different levels where it significantly impacts a specific stakeholder group, and it's maybe a lower impact of others. And so finding a balance that's going to support the decision to be made. It's not going to make everyone happy, but if we're clear in how we're going to engage community and how we're going to use the input, that helps. That helps the process. Another key component, you know, with the improvements with public participation is, we're doing good stuff, we've got a long way to go for us in that, we're really working to engage our underrepresented stakeholders. You know, Carolyn addressed that before, we learned that from the Start Time survey that we did with Nelson Room a year ago, where we're really not engaging and gathering the input of some of our underrepresented populations, and we're using Latino as an example. And so we're looking for ways to better understand what those barriers are. One of those is that we're looking to contract the labs or the natural leaders to try to do telephone surveys out to families to better understand how, what are your communication needs, what are the barriers that you're experiencing? So crafting kind of that survey, doing telephone surveys with folks that they are connected with in some way, so we can use that to improve on our communication, but then also see through. Like, it's meeting the needs of our stakeholders versus expecting them to come to us. Another component of that is that cultural competency check for all of us, you know, from the top down, which is the board, they are really understanding our stakeholders and various needs and, you know, changing community, and so being thoughtful about that, especially in the community, it's a little different. And sometimes that's hard for folks, and why are we doing this different here? And it's being flexible. So an example, and you guys are probably sick of seeing this stuff, but this is an example of how we've engaged, I'll step you through what the process was. For the Enrollment Demographics Task Force, which is board-appointed task force, the level of engagement there, when you look at the spectrum, is to collaborate, use a board, the policy and procedure, we've established this task force that's responsible for researching and studying issues, becoming expert committees, I'll call that, making recommendations to the board, and they've been doing a lot of work. So the level of engagement, when we're talking about that boundary adjustment, where they decided to, not only at that consult level, who is a board, they've become that expert task force to really research the issues and make a recommendation to you. They determined in that decision-making process, which looks like this, don't go back to what I just said, is that they wanted to consult. And we want to start with that level that you want to engage folks versus jumping to the technique, because sometimes we jump it out, "Oh, I want to have it up the path." Well, let's go back and figure out what we want to do. So with the Enrollment Demographics Task Force, they consulted the community arriving in different ways throughout the process. Additionally, what we did, and I think it was important, and it's important when you're trying to right that ship too, is went back to the board, and through three separate occasions to say, "Board, are we on the right track? Here's our process. Are we in agreement that this is the engagement process we're going to use?" So it's honoring that process. And then in the decision process, you know, Enrollment Demographics Task Force brought that to the board and say, "Okay, we've got enrollment, road issues coming, and we need to do something about it." And the school board, you know, approved that recommendation to build the high school and bring the reconfiguration in, so, you know, we need to adjust boundaries so that we can manage this. So in that decision process, EDTF, the gathering information, is that collaborative, collaborative level. And then in establishing the decision criteria that they would use, decided that we're going to consult the community, and we're going to do an online survey regarding considerations to improve the process, the decision-making process. And so consulting, developed some alternatives, and again, consulted using open houses and then having the online input forums, and saying to community, "Hey, give us your input, we're going to consider it." Doesn't mean we can make all of the changes, because we can't. But doing our best to listen to our constituents, and then making adjustments to the plan as necessary, brought it back out, and consulted again with the online forums, and saying, "Okay, here's our best work, tell us, you know, is it, tell us additional input, if there's something we can do to improve on your piece." We'll do that, and they, of course, brought that recommendation to the school board, and it was approved. And I, I've stated this previously, that they confirmed the plan, asked for any additional guidance from the board, which was given, to better support the work. But the best piece regarding this was that we honored, and we're able to honor the process because it was very clear, and it was equitable, and it provided that consistency for stakeholders. Not saying everybody is happy about it, but it was a clear process. So folks knew that we're going to, we'll be sure that we'll do our best. So that's an example, one of the examples. Another one is the Greater Reconfiguration Task Forces that have been assembled, and they've been doing their work for the last couple of years now? Was it May of 2013 that they were put together, or maybe it's 14?
They were involved.
Oh, they're here, okay. So level of engagement is to collaborate, and that's the board adopted the resolution. Greater Reconfiguration is a component of that, so there's three task forces, elementary, middle, and high school, to develop the plan for implementation. Their level of engagement, in addition to the district and board to collaborate and create these expert committees to do a lot of, like, work on that was to consult. And it's important to note here, with the Greater Reconfiguration Task Forces, that they decided based on their specific needs, here's the information we need to support our work. So similar process, taking a look at what are the needs of stakeholder needs, and crafting something that would work for those task forces. So online survey, and then something special, let's put this, is the Middle School Greater Reconfiguration Task Force, which is a different piece. So looking at defining problem, opportunity, the decision to be made, school board view, adopted the resolution, and creation of the task forces at that collaborative level. And then they've decided as part of their work is to consult. So they did the online survey, they have that data to support their development of the alternatives. And then what's an interesting piece, I probably need to put it up to the develop alternatives, is that the Middle School Greater Reconfiguration Task Force had recommendations and presentations from two groups, a parent group and teachers regarding, to the academic subcommittee, of course, you were mentioning, and the academic program. So that's something that they did additionally based on the stakeholder needs, and to bound, and to inform their crowd. So they'll be creating and presenting to the school board at this time, a recommendation. So similar to what, similar to what EDTF did, is they've gone back, maybe twice, is that my current theory, gone back to the school board and shared information, and then asked for additional guidance from the board, who provided that, and then they'll present the recommendation to you, and they'll consider that.
So, yeah, this is a perfect example, as we go with a disconnect, right, and what are the needs of the task force versus the needs of some parents in terms of levels of different engagement? And so, you know, it's kind of a perfect case study, and what you do when there's a disconnect between what folks are looking for for different ways of engagement.
And I think it's something we'll, we'll have to be very clear in what that process is. And so the board has that framework set, and we have the task force, we've charged them with creating a recommendation, and one thing that, so the task force has been created, they've determined the level of participation that they need to support their work, which is to consult the community, the work, this is the work that they've done to date, the board, they've met with the board and asked for the guidance which the board has given. So it isn't difficult, challenged that area, and one thing the board will have to be mindful of is, you've got a recommendation from stakeholder, a stakeholder group, and how do you balance that as a board with the needs of other folks? So how do you consider that in addition to, it's a challenge. And we'll have to really step through what is, what's the best, it's a, it's, it's important in this, but you do run the risk of, you've created a task force, you've charged them with their specific scope of work, and they have done, you know, what's been asked of them, and so if the school board goes in a different direction, you do run the risk of, you know, now there's a blue that's basically, not undermined, but, you know, they've done all of this work, they've asked for guidance, and you do run the risk of dissatisfied stakeholders in addition to other folks who may be dissatisfied. But one thing that's important to keep in mind is, that consideration has been done by the task force if we're considering the virgin parent, if that's interested in their recommendation, and have teachers who are interested in that, provided guidance to the task force.
I understand, in this case, they're probably going to give us a couple recommendations.
Can you go to the slide? I think it's, this is a really interesting, the one, not the other one, the one that's more, this one. And so, and so, having, like I said, I've looked at this IP2 stuff a little bit, and I think it's fabulous work, and I think it's trying to model out how to deal with really difficult stuff, when you have multiple people that want, you know, various different things. I mean, it's basically trying to idy up, and, and, and so it's enormously challenging. And so these languages, just like PBIS, and we've seen that in the schools, having this kind of shared language about, "What are we intending to do right now? Where are you at? How are you doing this?" So I think it's, it's a model in that sense, and, and I think it has a lot of value in that in terms of being really clear about what has been done, what can be done, when that can be considered, and how all that's mapped out. I think it's a, it might be an overreach to say, "Well, this is what the plan was," or "This is what a plan was three years ago, and now you're in a situation, and you have multiple parties with multiple interests." And so whether or not that was the plan at one point in time, that does not necessarily mean that you have to stay in this role, or that you didn't misallocate the decision-making, or there's too much here. So it can go off the line. This is, this is a model that, well, if we do this, and like, so I think, and it kind of begs the question that some of us have had about task forces. So this task force is really well-suited to this task force, the way we do it, like EDTF seemed like in boundary configuration, okay? But the middle school task force, given the challenging issue that it has and the multiple factors, it's not seeming like it's working as well. And that may be more because of the issue than it is because of some theoretical model of the way in which you're supposed to allocate the decision-making authority and understanding the problem and the issue. So, so just by saying, "Oh, if this goes off the, if, if, if we have conflict, ongoing conflict, and this intention of how to deal with that big, tough decision doesn't necessarily come out with an easy, simple, everyone's happy about that decision," that isn't necessar, I mean, you, I think I have to be very careful about the autopsy on that particular kind of a situation. There's certain issues that are just going to be much more contentious than others.
There are. But I would challenge that, this is a framework in the decision process, so it's not about, "We started it three years ago, and so things have changed." This is a responsive component based on need, and so I think that's what I'll get back to. It's important to know common ground, but it's important for clarity. It's important for clarity to the task force, but there are one of the situations where stakeholders have different needs, opposing needs.
That's the thing, I didn't say that, yeah.
Opposing needs. And so it's, that's why it's so important, and this is one where the board is providing that guidance to the task force, and they're making the best decision, the most informed decision that they can based on understanding what the organization, the board's direction needs are.
Well, I also think that there could be, you know, it depends on.
I would just kind of, kind of the short answer, I think, to a very real dilemma that you surfaced, is that at the end of the day, whether it's EDTF, or whether it's Greater Reconfiguration Task Force, or whether it's, you know, any other number of structures, the board pulls the, you are the arbiters of what the decision-making process is. So with respect to, say, the Greater Reconfiguration Task Force, and I didn't intend, I didn't intend for this to, but folks are on that.
This is all right.
You know, a, no, it's a, but it's a relevant conversation.
It's good to talk about the procedure.
You know, a, however long ago, a process was determined, a structure was created that had the endorsement of the board, that created task forces that operated and collaborated. And now there obviously are some competing interests as to that process, and unfortunately, to undo sort of what's been established, that has to come from the board, though, because you were the ones who established how this, how these decisions and how these processes were going to unfold.
What I find very, I'm trying to gather my thoughts on this, what I find, we communicate up here, and we make a decision. When I first came on the board, we made a decision for, since we're talking about this, challenge for science. The board's now just communicated their approval of science challenge. That was two years ago, I think, and maybe not new quite. Now the board said this, and I think my confusion is, now we have this other way of decision-making process, and things are getting turned on their head, and I don't see the alignment, the communication alignment in that, I don't see. So I'm not quite sure where that fits in all this, but it feels like there isn't alignment, there is communication, and that communication, I mean, we, I remember sitting up there, I didn't even know what challenge was, and that was brought before us as something to vote on, by a task force, I believe. And now that might all be revised, and so I guess I'm having, that.
This is, this is an issue where it is, there's, the history of how the challenge creates a fall, does it definitely make it more complicated for the association?
And that's why it would be relevant to look at the process, and that's where I do take some exception with some of the strong language where the board might be undermining, but I think, and I know you don't mean it that way, but then I'm feeling undermined that I just made a decision, and that's getting flipped around. So, and I'm feeling the board's being undermined. So this is the balance that I'm trying to do in this communication process. So it's, it's a, that's where I get, you know, where it gets concerning to me, and...
I would add one real quick, and I know I didn't say it, was the timeline for this, when you post what I'll call a false or a compressed timeline, that's when some of these things can blow up. So for something like what we're talking about, if you say, "Here it is, here's the press release, and it's going to get done in three weeks," it might, that might be impossible, and that's not the fault of any one of the parties, it might just be the fault of the timeline. And so I think in some of the issues we have, the, yeah, we might be, everything might be structurally correct, except for too short of a timeline for the, for all the parties to come to an understanding of the various issues.
Or the communications, what, you know, being, like, here was the communication, now there's this.
Yeah, it's still like, it's a more time talking about challenge, but I'm kind of thinking in your picture of how we do task force and going forward, and we're going to talk about it, and what I'm, I'm looking at, just there on the chart, we have a high school Greater Reconfiguration Task Force that's doing just lovely, right? We were no concerns, things were moving along, I mean, there, certainly if we did it, there's difficult decisions that have been made, but it hasn't risen to our level. The Technology Advisory Committee has never produced a single thing at a board meeting, right? So there are task force that somehow by their nature of the topics they're covering are allowing them to do their work in a way that we would oppose, that they're stakeholder. The EDTF, we knew in advance that was going to be much complicated and difficult, what's the word?
There would be some losers in some sense.
Yeah, I think folk had it right now, but we knew in advance that that was going to have a lot of challenges along the way, and I think that's why we had it checking in so often and constantly. I think the middle school one, rightly or wrongly, because... we didn't anticipate the level of controversy there. Over some of the issues that they're dealing with. You know, obviously, retrospect, that's the most different looking of those three. At Smart, later High School Star Time, that certainly is a task force that we know has the potential, as we look around at all that, the districts around us, and they're falling apart as they're going through this process. But that's the potential to have this controversy. And I think that's partly why you're having them check in with that. So I guess I'm trying to figure out what the, what the learning going forward moment is here. Okay, how do we?
We're still in the middle of it, don't choose.
But we, we certainly can learn. We can't, you don't say, we're in the middle of it, we can't learn, right? Let's learn and figure out what we can do better as a board.
I think that's, you know, that's why you have the periodic check-ins, is because you are trying to create as much alignment between the work of the group that's doing the processing and bringing the recommendations forward, and what's going to be supportable and endorsed on that. We do that in a number of areas, whether it's planning for a law, you know, all of those kinds of things, we're having those kinds of on, you know, ongoing discussions so that there is that sense of alignment. The only thing I would add is just at the end of the day, these processes result in recommendations. They don't result necessarily in decisions. They result in recommendations, you know? And I think from the honest point of view, taking, you want to be thoughtful and mindful about if a process you've created and put in place brings forward a recommendation. I think you want to be thoughtful about not accepting the recommendation or choosing to go in a different direction. But at the end of the day, it is just a recommendation.
But I still, I still have that question. When the board makes one decision, and this could happen in other areas, this is just the first one that I, that I, with the board rate. And we communicate that to our community, here's our decision. And then another process that we have in place could change that decision on the head. And this could happen, and I like your learning, this could happen. Communicating, communicating something, and I see why people get frustrated without communication. Big level communication, not anyone individuals.
So, yeah, I would say with that, the.
I don't know that I would have voted that in if I knew it was going to be flipped on its head. So I'm making a stand here, yes.
So, I'm sorry, so, do you get into it? And I apologize, because I'm just quicker. An example of when things, so we've got a process in place, we basically know the way that we're going, and we're moving right along it, but some changes. And early release Wednesdays is a great example of that, is we, you know what? We were ruling forward, we were following our I A P two, and we were going to consult our community. And so, but something changed. We gathered the input. Fridays were overwhelmingly more popular, Friday, Friday early release. But the board considered additional information, made the decision to do the early release Wednesday. The challenge was just within that process, supposed to, it felt pretty, because you communicated one way, and then this happened. I mean, there is an example of how this, you know, has happened in the past. But ultimately, there is, is absolutely right, we've had a process in place. The things that we can learn from this is just that additional clarity, and then the roles of, of folks, but ultimately, this is the board's decision, the recommendation that happens.
But I still am having to disconnect when you approve something and then you flip it. I, I still have that disconnect about how that is.
When you say approve something, do you mean you approve the process?
Or we sat up here two years ago, we were asked to take a vote on challenge, and that was recommended by the middle school, or not the middle school, but we recommended.
Semin, was it Semin?
That was, I think, was just going to run construction support.
And we were asked to vote on it, and then, so we stood behind, a board member, I stood behind that decision. That was recent. And then, so people, we communicate to the community, the board stands behind this decision. Now we're going to say, uh-oh, now we're going to, that can, that's where I see there's this huge disconnect.
I see what you're saying, because then we established task forces to plan for grade reconfiguration. A component of that was the academic.
And that's what I think it was, was that bigger ship, that this component of academics within the grade reconfiguration task force evolved, so that it started affecting the configuration of the challenge structure where we hadn't anticipated. And when I was on, when I was kicked off.
Because I wouldn't have voted yes if we were going to switch it, does that make sense?
So, so I would say that, you know, it's perhaps watering the bridge to this particular example. But when the processes are put in place on the front end, if there are specific parameters or specific, you know, limitations or restrictions, those ideally are communicated on the front end. So if you were, if this was a policy governance district, which it's not, those would be considered sort of the executive limitations. Within these goals that the board sets, what are the, what are the limits to what the administration can or can't do to achieve those goals? And that would be, I would say that Start Time is a good example where I, where I think there were some executive limitations that were established in the board's directives. One, no earlier than eight o'clock. Two, Start Time will be the overriding drive above other considerations. I mean, there were some, there were some parameters that were crafted as a part of the decision of how to move that issue forward. In this case, there weren't. And so, as can happen, now there's a bit of a, a balance to decide.
But why, I guess maybe that's the disconnect is with the people on those committees or the administrators, because when I'm taking a vote for something, I don't think that I need to specify at that time.
But I don't think those, I don't.
Don't move that now.
But I don't think the people on those task forces came to their work knowing where they would end. They came to the work to study what the middle level programs look like. And it was through that process of investigation and study and research and dialogue that they've arrived where they've arrived. But the people didn't join the task force predisposed to end up where they're, where they seem to.
But I think, kind of getting back to my point, you know, trying to, hindsight's 2020, obviously, and looking at the crystal ball. I don't think there's any way we would have gotten into the challenge conversation when we created the middle school for work. Again, so we were really creating a, we have no idea what middle school was like. We're going to go figure it out, come back and tell us what the best models were. Well, again, hindsight, maybe that should have been a trigger of, wow, that's going to create a lot of fear in our community, because that's the one that's going to change the possible. One grade level of elementary, one grade level of high school. But the structure of those two entities is not changing. And so how to, as we go forward, okay, we're creating a task force starter, later High School starter, middle school involvement, right, changing boundaries. Those are, we know are going to be trigger problems. Things are going to look different, that creates anxiety. How do we then, with those task force, okay, we know there's going to be fear out of, anyway, just thinking.
No, I think they're, and as you touch base with the different task forces and get updates and discussing all those challenges, and what do we need to shift or adjust to be responsive, to get the, a recommendation that the board, you know, who is most comfortable with that process, and it's kind of like honoring and understanding what are you doing with the process. But ultimately, as Larry had mentioned, the recommendation will come to you. The board, you're going to do your due diligence as you consider that recommendation. You're going to make your decision. And so we'll need to be very clear and patient back out to the community if there is, you know, depending on what the recommendation or recommendations are, I don't know what those would be, of why the board has chosen the way that it has chosen. You're right, you can't make everyone happy, but be as clear as we can.
If you could put that clarity slide, I think that's a useful one. And I would build on what Sandy's saying, because I think the learning moment really is, yeah, when we can anticipate, the, the, the level of change and the paradigmatic shift, the grander that is, the more likely it is to uncover bigger tensions, bigger changes, and probably need more milestones with board involvement. Okay, where are you running, oh, wow, that's a big rock. Bertha, you're going to have to maybe readjust your planning through that. And I just, I, I appreciate the optimism in the statement. The honoring the process ensures clarity, consistency, and equity. I think it increases. I think we hope that it does that. But, but, you know, you could honor the process and make that the most important thing to the other detravours. And so honoring the process, I think, is valuable. But I think in these contentious ones, and three of them have been mentioned, you know, we gotta, we gotta sit through and think about. But I, I don't want to be told, because I don't think it helps, or I think it sets up negativity, we need to honor the process. And, and, and it comes across, it can come across that way to say, well, you know, and I, and I think we need to, to honor the goal of meeting the needs of the children in the district, to all of the people who have concerns. And then, and then if a group, especially the task force, has done their due diligence and come to a conclusion, you know, oftentimes, it takes people a while to process that. Okay, show me how that works, show a bunch of other people if this really is a great idea. But you can't change, you know, consumer behaviors and other things on it. I, to me, a lot of it is the level of change and the timeline it takes to accept and embrace and understand that change. And, and I think that's where, on some of these, we might have the conflict. It's not necessarily that the process has gone wrong, maybe just the process is too fast.
And if the subject matter evolved in a, in a way that wasn't anticipated, you know.
Of course.
Kicking off, kicking off, you know, middle school reconfiguration and, and, you know, setting that up. You know, when you take that off and it takes you 12 months to start looking at curriculum, and then it's, oh, okay. So then perhaps the, the process, you know, it's, it's a way of looking at how to, how to solve. The disconnect, perhaps, let's say, oh, well, the whole process can pass again, but, you know, having some ability to adjust in the long way.
And I think, so, one thing too is, is at the beginning, you know, being as clear as we can. Of course, things happen. And that is one thing that the middle school grade reconfiguration task force has done. So, yes, we can't anticipate everything, but through this process, you know, additional input has been gathered. Now, we don't know what the recommendation is, but it has been gathered. So here's what that looks like. Now ultimately, so there are ways for that flexibility and responsiveness, the need to be flexible and responsible. Because you're absolutely right, what, you could be trucking along, right? These issues come up, it's what strategies can we use to address that? And you're, you're right, you can't make everyone happy. But we want to ensure, especially when there's task forces and there's a decision to be made, that you feel comfortable and you understand how the task force has, however they engage. If it's consulting, it'll be a consultant, because how they used this information and why they come to the decision. Ultimately, you're going to make the, the decision.
And I think with, you know, I appreciate that the people on the task force were willing to listen to the Save Our Challenge. And, and for that matter, the teachers union, the two big stakeholders in it. I, I guess, and I stated this on the dice, probably starting in September, I think. You know, I want to hear some of the voices at the table, so we're not getting splintered off. And I don't know, but when there's five of us and we're having, whether it's the union, whether it's Save Our Challenge, those groups coming in and not just talking to the task force, but sitting at the table where we can hear as a board, because otherwise, we're going to get the letters, which is fine, I love letters, I love emails. But, you know, because it helps me to know where people are at. But the teacher union's going to try and, one by one. And I think that I want to hear people's voices. And I know a lot of other districts do bring different voices to the table. We went to a, a training on that at WASDA. And I actually asked that question, I probably said, so I'm going to keep.
This was part of our original, that was part of our.
But I ask you, can we get back to the engagement piece? It's being very clear on how we're going to engage, making sure there's consensus on, on that, what that process will be and what the responsibilities and roles will be. I think that's probably the biggest learning with this one, and that's where things can go right. And it's understanding what is the desired outcome, and then crafting it around what the goal is. And so.
So can we, can you find out how other districts do that? Because I mean, I, I do hear that other districts are engaging their stakeholders this way.
Well, I, I hope it's a little bit. I think some of it is, it, it depends on the topic, right? Sometimes people do like annuals, they're changing, you know, their table.
But the board, that's being able to gate, engage the board at the table at a one session.
Right, right, but it, you know.
It depends on the need, what is your desired outcome.
Absolutely.
But I think, right, now, some of them, I mean, they're big ones. I mean, I think we are, like E D T F and some other things, first, some of these were best in show in terms of some of the ways in which we've dealt with very challenging, difficult issues. And so, you know, I, 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 I think that the model is, is perfect. Yeah, I know, and I think we need to, to understand, and that's that learning moment. So why did that go so well? It was such a minefield. And then others, I mean, there's lots of minefields, and then some of them, is it just, sometimes maybe you just can't avoid them, and others that, and oftentimes.
I think the key issue is making that one.
But I think it goes back down to crafting and understanding. So it's, it's making sure it's, there is clarity and understanding the roles, the expectation, the desired outcomes. It is essential, and engagement can work, and it's different depending on what the need is. So you're still using that same framework to achieve your goals. It's the clarity and understanding. I think, I think.
Yeah, I, I continue to believe that this particular issue is, it is also just the topic itself.
So the teacher.
There is just a, there is just something particular to the topic of challenge that is exciting, more emotion and passion. And, you know, boundaries were so complex and so complicated that, even for the board, that none of us, myself included, had the expertise of knowing where drawing all these lines. So you really did release that to an expert group and trust in their judgment and their, the expertise they had developed around this one. Is, you're a little bit closer to the action. And it's just because of the problem.
I just go back to when you make a decision up here, and it's been, it must have been two years, and I'm repeating this, because I, I don't feel like maybe it's not being heard. We make a decision, say yes, we've just communicated an expectation. So then to pull it back and take it away, I'm struggling with that. Even if somebody said, recommend it, I'm going, I'm still struggling with that. You just asked me to say yes to a big program change. And so, and that's a communication piece too.
Director, could you? I'm just going to reiterate based on what I was saying. You know, these things are too far in spectrum, there are people in touch as plans and others. I think things that are more concrete, like a boundary, there's ways to approximate the best decision and draw that line. And people kind of come in terms of that, and it's more philosophical. I think this piece of art is beautiful, I over this piece of art. That's much more important. So anyway, it comes to absolute concrete for the task force, so much easier task, and it's a bit more physical.
And ultimately, the combination of our strategies that can be used in this, in this. So sometimes in situations like that, I think this is, for future, it's about to engage and really save orders in to the process in a way that would be beneficial. So that's all I have, is a lot of examples for how currently are engaging. I know someone wanted to vote more, but.
And I'm wondering if I can just take a few minutes. And I sent you, I had sent you some information about Thought Exchange in the last briefing. And only, so, you may have heard of or seen Thought Exchange, perhaps in some other districts, or perhaps in some of the WASDA conferences. They're being increasingly used in the K-12 arena. Leann and I have been having discussions with them that have really been focused primarily around trying to get some kind of structure in place to get after the board's goal of resetting mission vision values in the coming year. So just a 30-second summary of how Thought Exchange works. It's open-ended, so it's very qualitative. Blast out an email to, to folks who would be interested in participating. Couple of open-ended questions. People provide narrative responses, that's step one. And step two is those same people then get back these narrative responses, and then essentially you. essentially you do a value voting on, you know, you'll be given a cluster of responses, and I've got 20 votes, and, you know, five of them, I think, yes, I can totally buy into that one, I don't buy into this one, I don't give any votes, that kind of thing. And then the third step is what Thought Exchange does, they then aggregate and somehow collate and make sense of all of that data, they call it the discover phase, where, you know, here's, here's what your community is telling. And it's a pretty, it's a pretty cool process. I participated in a couple myself, Leann accounts as well. The downside to it is, because it's email-based, it has the same issues that we already experienced, which is it doesn't do, it, it has a weakness in reaching your traditionally underrepresented, under-responsive communities. The plus side is, it's, it's a, it's a way of engaging people in a conversational way without having 3,000 people, you know, expecting 3,000 people to come to a meeting. So, they've given a pricing quote, they've given, you know, a summary proposal, they generally like to do multi-year contracts and do at least a couple of engagement sessions every year. One could be more at a strategic level around district mission, vision, values, one could be more issue-based. But the why I'm bringing it up here is because, as we've been talking about superintendent search and the opportunity engagement, they would be interested and willing and available to do their first launch, their first engagement be around qualities and characteristics of the incoming superintendent. So that's the only reason why I bring it up here, otherwise I don't, with everything else going on...
I've seen, I've seen these soundings, they're actually really, I think our university engaged in one process of that, and it comes up with the different words, and, because it comes up with a bubble where it says like...
They actually did, I did, I did the one for...
It's like a circle in the...
I did the one with the request later start, just because I thought, and they basically gave all the questions, it's type participated in, and I got, in the second phase, I got to do the dot, and I actually saw my answers in there.
Right.
And then you can do it, and so if someone says, I'm concerned about kids in the dark, kid, you know, children in daycare, sports, you know, sleep, depression, et cetera, it's all kinds of things that would be there, people type them in, in phase one, and then in phase two, you dot them, and then they'll be able to collate that out. So if 100 people said, I'm concerned about X issue, but then none of those get any votes, you realize it, it might be a small number of people that feel it, whatever, so it, it has some really interesting attributes. And I, I appreciate you sharing this with us, the cost is like a big number, and I don't know about other ways in which, and it's, it's not rocket science, it's just an app that does some fairly benign steps. If they do it and do it well, there's this thing called the iPhone, the Indycogs and other things, they're not doing anything special, but they really do it well, or SurveyMonkey, and so, you know, maybe it's worth...
SurveyMonkey is a G D S.
No, I understand that, but what I'm just saying, and that's, and that's, what is the value creation process, and how, you know, what are the alternatives, but it is, it's cool, it costs...
Well, and, and so, and there's two processes per year included in the price.
Correct.
So if we want to, you know, to do one for...
We should have a sales change, get a better price.
I would say the, the teaser, the teaser they're offering is, if you started in the fall with sort of a three-year plan, it's going to be the same price as if you choose to start in the spring with the superintendent search, just kind of your dry run or your pilot, I guess, you know, it's still a lot.
Oh, they do, they give you three years and three months, or three years?
They give you three years plus one additional process around the superintendent search. That's their, that's their incentive to get us, so. So I wouldn't even have brought this to you now, other than perhaps this is something, you know, as you voiced, you know, you're very interested in having community voice somehow present in the superintendent search process, realizing kind of the compressed timeline around this, might this be a vehicle that would be...
Were you planning on having presenting this as part of ongoing ways of engaging the community, like before the superintendent search, was this something that you guys were talking about bringing to us?
Yes, we were looking at this primarily around the board priority for this year of getting some kind of process established to do a reset of mission, vision, values next year.
Okay, which...
So that's, that's, that was the genesis of our conversation.
You had talked about it at least once before. Yeah, so, yeah.
So we, we have like a variety of service information, and we have, like, this brings something particularly unique or new to our district.
What's interesting about this is the opportunity for folks own to provide input and to also prioritize, and what's interesting about that is to be able to prioritize and look at what other people are bringing or sharing, because it could be something that you haven't thought of before, so I do see a benefit to that, and additionally, do think that you can not work for it. My biggest concern, Larry, that is, are underrepresented, that historically traditional and the other, is stakeholders, they're, this is not a tool they will naturally do, so just be mindful of that, but I think there are ways for us to, to improve on that component.
Did you ask them about them?
We did, we did.
I know, they don't have solutions.
They talked about, well, you can use text message, I mean, some of the, some of the stuff we've already tried with, with limited success, so they don't have a, they don't have a bag of tricks that we're not already trying to...
There's no perfect one, perfect... So you could go to the schools, like they said, and have the natural leaders.
So we have the, Elizabeth and I had a discussion about it, about this, why don't we, what we're talking about in draw, what we're talking, what we're starting with first is, let's understand the needs of our stakeholders, you know, what are those communication areas, what are the communication and engagement needs, and just because we have lots of ideas in our head that let's, let's get that to the board.
And I don't know if, if you had the chance to look at, I think we sent three samples in the, in the briefing, and so you can kind of see what's the end product that you get. And they, they've improved some displays and some functionalities around that, and...
We did this at my school with mission vision, when we're building our mission vision, and I remember you see the bubbles where it says, here's what, like if someone's the, for a superintendent, if someone wanted communication, let's say, that kind of comes out, like, let's say, the majority did, that kind of comes out as the strongest, do you understand, like the way they displayed it?
They do a model like that at the end?
Well...
I would, I would see the...
Illustrated, yeah. They, they prioritize, I mean, so you do, I, I don't know if it's by size or whatever, but you do get, these were the comments that people most frequently gravitated to.
Right. And I guess, so, just moving towards conclusion, it sounds like everyone's had, kind of what the process would be to vet this and or to get through, if there are any other viable terms, if search firms are familiar with it, is it, you know, so, so I've got a series of questions, but it sounds, we're all, you know, moving towards the pre-close, as myself and Fred might talk about.
The thing I don't...
Are we, are we at least interested in having a nice conversation about it?
I, I don't know if, I would need more information to understand if it would fit into superintendent search, because our timeline might be too compressed, understanding how long, it sounds like, you know, since this is a repetitive process, besides the equity issues involved, just for the superintendent, just...
I don't believe it would be terribly cumbersome, I mean, they'd need an email dump from us, they would probably have two, one or two very basic questions, what quality characteristics do you think are most important, you know, very open-ended narrative type of question that goes out for a certain period of time, and then they do whatever they do behind the scenes, and then send it out for the second start process. So I, you know, if you're doing a full search and you're going to have an application period that's going to be open for four to six weeks, I imagine a lot of that could occur during that four to six weeks, so you could, I would think, be in a place of having all of the feedback completed and filed by the time you were actually in a selection process. So, if it's, if...
There's a question that we can put on the, the next Tuesday, you mean?
Well, it is, yeah, in terms of their, because it might just be part of the process, right, if we have another process to reach out to.
That may be included as well.
Right, exactly, it's just one tool where we, it's not the only tool, so there's still might be ways of getting that.
And so I think to adjust my own work schedule, but is it the kind of thing that people doing the quick background checks on the search firms might just do some quick checks on various mechanisms to get feedback? I believe one expedited happened.